Good evening, everyone. We're going to call tonight the Plan Commission Study Session for St. John, October 18th, 2023. If I can get roll call, please.
Robert Burleson?
Here.
Yolanda Cardona is absent. John Gillis here. Joe Gomez-Stagel?
Here.
Bob Valloy?
Here.
Jenna Lordson?
Here.
John Kennedy?
Here.
Attorney Adam Decker?
Here.
Engineer John Dykstra?
Here.
Councilman Liaison Brian Blazek?
Present.
Tom Andrew Joel Wizwati is absent.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have Item A, Rose Garden, Phase 3, Block 2. This is a proposed final plat of Rose Garden. Doug Reddick, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Doug Reddick with DVG, representing Sublime Homes. Mike Granacey was unable to be here tonight, but this is pretty straightforward. We received our extensions for the primary plats, a primary plat, a couple of weeks ago, and we're here to plat the three lots there, which will be Rose Garden, Phase 3, Block 2. All the streets and the improvements are in. They were in some time ago, so we're just here to kind of move this along and get this out of records. He's got some interested buyers.
Questions or comments? Doug, I watched this. I was not here the last one, so I understand. We're not connecting that road. The cul-de-sac, you guys feel confident you can get the cul-de-sac in?
Yeah, we got the wetland girl taking a look at that because we have to do some wetland permitting for that. I know we can make it work. We looked at it a long time ago, too, as an alternate, but because it wasn't on the original primary plat that way, we have to amend the primary plat to do those last two lots.
Okay. I just, you know, just hopefully make, I know you're only doing the five, four, and three lots, just making sure we can get that cul-de-sac in in the next phase of the...
We'll make it work.
Okay. Everyone good? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll see you at November.
I'll be here.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have a request for extension for primary plat for Preserves West. Mr. Slager, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Jack Slager with Schilling Development, representing the Preserve. So this is the Preserve West. We, the primary plat, we platted one section so far, Unit 1 of Preserve West, and that expires on 11/4 of '23, so we are requesting an extension of the primary plat. I'm not really clear if you guys are granting six-month extensions or one-year extensions at this point, or...
It's still in a six right now until, yeah, until we get the updates passed.
So I guess we will be requesting a six-month extension, at least to get us into next summer, and we may have to do another one, but...
You can request more than one extension, just to let you know.
You can request two.
Oh.
Yeah, to make it a year if you need to.
I will do that, though. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah.
Comments? Slager, anything else we missed for that? Okay.
Nope.
All right. Hearing none, we'll go on to the next item. Item C, we have the Preserve West, Unit 1. This is a recommendation to the Town Council for release of performance letter of credit.
Yeah, so, so the final inspections were completed. We completed the punch list items, and I think, Bob, you must have gone back out and found another curb that was cracked, so we're working on that. We should get that fixed up next week, and then we'll be ready to convert from performance bond into maintenance bond.
So, John, this letter will be updated that you sent. It's been since July, but there's a lot of action items. A lot of these have been addressed.
Yeah, there won't be another punch list letter, but other letter, a release letter and the maintenance bond letter, yes. We're working on that.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Nope.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, we have Martin's Commercial. This is requesting a waiver from an eight-foot sidewalk to a five-foot sidewalk. It's brand perfect timing. You are up, sir.
Thank you, John.
No, you're welcome, sir. If you want to address the board, name record for the, for the record, or name and company for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Brandt, Brandt Construction. My address is 5201 Fountain Drive, Crown Point, Indiana. I'm here tonight to, was going to request a variance for reducing the sidewalk along Parish Avenue, but I'm here tonight to rescind or not go forward with that request because my, our engineers provided, I guess, the proper documents, John, to create the eight-foot sidewalk along Parish Avenue that would not cause a huge problem to the drainage easement and that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Kennedy or John. We did review the latest plan from his engineer, and it's showing an eight-foot sidewalk, and so we expected this to follow likely. The cross-sections also showed there's not a major impact to the swell, which was one of the things questioned initially, and it looks like the eight-foot can fit in there with no major impact to the swell.
So no hardship for the request?
No hardship. Correct, yeah.
What is the process for him? Does he just come into the Plan Commission and withdraw, or is it, is it official act?
I mean, just for our records, if you wouldn't mind shooting me an email, just so I have it in writing?
That you're withdrawing your request for a waiver?
Yes, I'm withdrawing our request tonight for the variance.
Yeah, if you could just put that in a document, an email version, so she has it in writing to Jenna. All right?
Not a problem. Thank you very much for you guys to review our plans and make this happen. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have Item E. This is Greystone, Unit 3. This is two items. We have a proposed final plat for Greystone, Unit 3, Phase 3, 31 single-family residential lots. And then also, there's a recommendation of the Town Council for acceptance of a two-year performance letter of credit. So there would be two items under Item E.
Yep. Good evening, Jack Slager again with Schilling, representing the Greystone Development. This will be the final phase of Greystone. This is Unit 3, Block 3. All of the sewer and water main are in at this point. They will be installing the streets next week, so hopefully when we come back in two weeks, we'll be at the point where the infrastructure is complete or nearly complete. And I think the engineers responded to you today with their corrections on the plats, so we'll have the, we'll have the milars with us when we come back in two weeks. And we'll also get that performance letter of credit. We'll, we'll work on the amount between now and then to get that nailed down.
Yeah, we'll look for, as usual, your verification, and then we'll also have staff check that and confirm it. And if there's any, say, any roadway outstanding, because we get deluged by weather or something, then we'll just put a percentage on that and include that in the LLC.
Yep. Perfect.
Yeah, that satisfactory letter from our engineer is important, so. So you got all the information you require now to provide us a letter for final plat, or do you need more information, or is that in the works?
Well, we have to wait on the finished construction, and then there'll be a letter, yes. Yeah, we did receive the, the response on the survey, on the plat comments. I have my survey, surveyor verifying that, and I don't expect any problem with that.
Okay. Questions, comments? All right.
Very good. Thank you.
Item F, request for extension of primary plat for 90 cent, 90 single-family residential lots at Astoria. How are you, sir?
Good. How are you?
Doing well.
My name is Michael Herbers with Diamond Peak Homes, 1313 White Hawk Drive in Crown Point. This evening I'm requesting our primary plat to be extended for two six-month periods. It sounds like we can do. I believe our plat expires mid-December, so just trying to get ahead of the game a little bit for that extension, so.
I probably should ask this to, is it just because of the market currently? Is it interest rates?
So, yes and no. I mean, we did, it did take a little bit of time to get the permitting for sanitary and water for that development. And then by the time we had that, I had an aggressive schedule put together for the end of this year, and then one of the contractors said, "Sorry, I can't fit you in my schedule anymore," so it didn't make sense for us to start pushing dirt if I couldn't get roads in, because I didn't want to leave the site exposed to have potential engineering issues come springtime. So between that, interest rates, you know, the cost of money not being as, as cheap as it was a year and a half, two years ago, cost of developments increasing as well, it just made sense for us to kind of table this until spring of next year, so. Nope.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Item G, the Preserve, request for extension of primary plat for the remaining 68 single-family residential lots.
Good evening, Jack Slager again. So this is the original Preserve between 93rd and 101st along White Oak. This primary plat expires on 12/1 of '23. We do plan to put another phase in next spring. I don't know if a six-month extension would be adequate. That would, that would bring us to like May 1st, so we'll probably do the same and ask for the two six-month extensions, but I, I do believe we'll have another section going in next spring slash summer that will then extend us for another year, once that's, plat is recorded.
And Mr. Slager, the request is just, is it a timing issue, or is there any other concerns?
Yeah, no, actually, sales have been fairly strong at the Preserve. We put in a lot of lots last year, so there's quite a bit of activity out there. It's going well, but we're, yeah, just as far as timing, with our plat expiring in December, we didn't have time to put another phase in this fall.
Okay. All right. Let's see the alphabets. Next on the agenda, we have Continental, Unit 3. This is a recommendation to the Town Council for release of cash escrow in the amount of $5,500 and acceptance of a three-year maintenance letter or credit or certi bond. So there would be two items under Item H. Slager?
Yes, so we did put forth a $5500 cash escrow. That was to guarantee the completion of the as-built drawings. Everything is complete out there at Continental, Unit 3. The roads are in, the surface asphalt is on, streetlights are up, so we're ready to go into the maintenance bond. I have the amount from, from you for that. That's $29,080.50, I think, if I can read my writing, and I will have that maintenance letter of credit ready for the next meeting.
John, anything?
Yeah, as soon as we get a copy of his, of the bond from his bank, I just verify the amount that matches, and then, I actually have the letter all waiting to go, so.
I think I have it right here in front of me.
Well, no, that's the release letter. Yeah, that's the release. There'll be the, the letter for recommending on the maintenance bond.
Okay. All right. Questions, comments from the board?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item I, proposed final plat of Streamside. This is 54 single-family residential lots. How are you, sir?
Good evening. Jeff Yatsko with Oltoff Homes. We will be seeking final plat approval for the 54 lots at Streamside. This will be platted all as one phase, so the entire development at one time. I've received plat comments. I believe the plat is in order. I was just waiting till after tonight to get milars, and then I've had a discussion with John already about getting the performance bond amount solidified before the next meeting.
Any comments?
No, no, the, the plat's been reviewed and corrected per, per review, and we're just waiting on final construction status and then the performance bond. So I'm expecting a report from Jeff. What was the date?
I think it was the middle of next week, the 25th.
Yeah, and, and once we have that, then we'll finalize that number, yeah.
As you know, Jeff, that satisfactory letter is important for us to get from John, that everything looks good. So just make sure he gets that information in time to get it reviewed.
Yeah.
Questions, comments? John, anything? You're good?
I'm good, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, we have Item J, Franciscan Alliance. This is a proposed rezone from open space to C2 Highway Commercial. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening. My name's Robert Harmeyer with MSKTD Architects. I also have Connor Strig on the line from Kimley Horn Civil Engineers.
I'm sorry, who?
Connor Strig with Kimley Horn is on the team's call as well.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hello there, sir.
Yeah, we are seeking rezone of a split-zoned parcel, Franciscan Health is, so that we can develop that as a medical site. The, the parcel is currently split-zoned with the half towards the state road as being C2. The back half towards the railroad is currently zoned open space. We like to bring it all up to C2 zoning for full utilization of that site.
All right. Questions or comments from the board?
So, sir, can you show me how this, this open space, so on the screen you see, and unfortunately...
I have to stay here, don't I?
So tell me where the open space sort of slices the site.
Jenna, can you go to the zoning? There's a zoning map that's on there. I think that's the best representation.
Well, I want to see how it affects, how it affects the building.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I don't have a good, probably, representation of that.
Maybe this, this is the, this is the piece they've been looking for, yeah.
Can we go to one of the colored site plans?
Well, that's, that actually go down to that, right there. Yep, that's a perfect one right there. So the, where the zoning, the differentiation between the two is at, is, falls behind the building, so if you can see where the structure's at, if you kind of, I'll go up and point real quick.
Probably the next, probably the next one, John, shows it.
Showing on there.
Yeah.
So it takes out some of the, so it's part of the parking is inside that zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't intend to put the building within that area. Would be the parking in the back that would be required for the site. The majority of that open space zoning is even further back towards the railroad, which is currently all wetlands and floodplain. We don't plan to change any of those elevations or that floodplain at all. We're going to keep it in place as is, but that open space does come into the developable, buildable area on the site.
Okay. And when you guys looked at this site, did you look at any other sites within St. John?
I don't know the answer to that one. I was presented with this site to use and develop.
Okay. Do you know how these entities are going to be incorporated? What their tax? Are they a non-tax?
I assume they're going to be through Franciscan Health and will be tax-exempt, yes.
Okay, and you understand this is in our TIF district?
Yes, I do.
Has MKSK, because I know you guys have worked with the TDDs at the RDA, and you have economic impact, have you guys done an analysis on how this might affect the town of St. John having a non-taxable entity in our TIF district?
We have not, and, and we are a different firm than MKSK.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I am MSKTD Architects.
I apologize, sir.
That's okay. That's okay. I know they do a lot of work up here. We've worked with them as well.
Okay.
Too many letters.
So has an analysis been done that are you aware of?
I am not aware of one.
This has?
I'm not aware of one. I can, I could ask Franciscan Health and see if that one has been put together.
Okay, because I think it would be important for me to understand the impact a non-taxable entity will have in our town's TIF. And I don't know if they have done that in other communities, but I think it would be important for me to make a well-informed decision on the impact this potentially could have before I'm comfortable making a decision on a zoning change.
Good.
I'd feel the same way, too.
I do, too. Thank you.
And I understand it's a great amenity for our community. However, for nine years that I've been up here, one of the biggest concerns that I've heard is we're a growing community, and the infrastructure is somewhat behind, and unfortunately, a TIF district is a mechanism that this town can use to cover infrastructure costs, and I'm concerned of entities in our TIF district that does not affect, have a positive effect. So for me to make, to, as we go through this process, I just need an understanding of how that impacts our TIF district.
Sure.
And I don't know if they would do that, or if that's something that might be on the onus of the town, but somebody needs to under, I need to have a better understanding before we...
I will ask the question. I will get it originated and started, absolutely.
Awesome. And then, other questions, because I understand this would have to go through a use variance because it's through our BZA. I know the medical office will have to go through you, uh, use variance through the BZA, but it also says ED. Is that emergency department?
Yes.
So that would not have to be a use variance. So it's a one-story for medical office, so is that, does office buildings where doctors have facilities?
Exactly. Just medical clinics, physician offices, rehab therapy.
And the emergency lab would be one story as well?
Yeah, there's essentially two structures that are connected with a connector corridor between the two. The structure to the north is planned to be the medical office building. The facility to the south is planned to be the freestanding ED, imaging and lab facilities. We are planning for these to go vertical, so it'd be one story, is the first phase. There'd be a second phase potentially down the road where we could take both structures vertically, expand parking to the north on the site to accommodate those, add some floors on to both of those structures.
Okay. And St. Francis owns both the open space and the C2 space currently. They own the C2 zoned area. They own all the land?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it is one parcel that is split-zoned.
Okay. Okay. And then proposing a public hearing in November?
Correct.
Okay. Now, does St. Francis own any other property within the town of St. John, other than, I think they own shops on 96, correct?
Yeah. I believe there's some existing clinic spaces that are in here that are smaller properties.
And what, do you know what their plans are for those?
I believe, I, no, I do not.
I'm, I'm putting you on the spot. I know you're, you're a representative, so, okay.
I believe there's some consolidation of some of those services, but I'm unaware of exactly which facilities would be consolidated. There's also plans to bring in new services at this facility, so there'd be services that are not currently here that would be brought in for the, in this building.
And I, I want to try to meet expectations. Do you have a public hearing? I know a financial analysis cannot probably be done in a couple of weeks, so I don't know how we communicate with St. Francis. Do you get back with Jenna or someone with this town to determine what next steps might be? But it sounds like, from what I'm hearing now, at least three of the board members would want some sort of additional information to understand the financial impact this would have on our TIF district, to feel comfortable making any type of recommendation to the Town Council. So I don't know if the, would be a good response to get back to Jenna, probably would be our point, or John, sorry, our point person for the Plan Commission.
Absolutely.
Questions, comments, concerns?
So, I'm sorry, in November, we're going to have a hearing, yet we don't know.
So they are, they're, they met all the notification requirements for a public hearing. They could have a public hearing. It is up to this council to make a determin, commission, to make a determination on next steps. We do not have to make a decision at that meeting. Again, we are only a recommendation. We are a recommendation to the Town Council on a zoning change. That recommendation goes to the Town Council, and then they make the ultimate decision. They could, they could agree with our recommendation. They, they don't have to agree with it. But for my comfort level, before I make any type of recommendation to the Town Council, I think, understanding the financial impact, this, this is 20 years of, or whatever, I don't know what the timeframe of the TIF district is, currently on 41, but this is going to have more than a several-year impact.
Would it be fair to ask them, see if November's too early, because we don't want to have you come in, and then we're going, we're still looking at the numbers and so forth. You think November's a pretty good idea that you should show up, or you want to wait until December, when we get the numbers and we start chewing on them, and see what kind of, uh, impact, economic impact on all of, who works?
It's been advertised already for November 1st.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Without, go ahead.
But what Mr. Kennedy is saying is that we don't have to make a decision. We can still hold the public hearing and let the public come and speak on the issue, but if we don't feel comfortable moving forward with a recommendation, then we don't have to.
All right.
If we're waiting for more information, or, you know, want a longer period of time to review information.
Not for us to review the information, not two hours or an hour, or day. That's all. But I can understand what you're saying very much.
Because I think everything around the zoning is C2, correct?
Mm-hmm.
It is the only non-C2 in the area?
Yeah, it's, it's a odd lot.
Odd little lot. Odd little island there.
Unfortunately, it's in our TIF district.
Understood.
Okay. I appreciate your understanding. Anything else for the board?
Nope.
So you'll get back with?
Yep.
Your client, your client will get back with Jenna and determine, hopefully, next steps. I think John and Jenna have an understanding of the board's information that we're looking for.
Yeah, and we've both been in contact with everyone that's been working on the petition, so, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Robert, is it Robert?
Yes, correct.
And I apologize for getting you mixed up. I saw MK.
It happens all the time, so.
I apologize. That's my mistake. It won't happen again. Well, I shouldn't say that. It will probably happen again.
Yeah, who are you kidding?
Robert, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the, oh, this is, we haven't proved, you guys didn't improve this last month, last week?
We were waiting for you.
Come on.
It's 136 pages. Nobody got back to me, so we didn't have the public hearing.
Yeah. How many public hearings are we going to have next month?
Two.
Okay, very good. All right. We have proposed amendments to the town subdivision ordinance control, control ordinance. So since no one has responded to Jenna, we're assuming everyone likes what they are seeing.
Well, it's already advertised now, so.
Yeah, so you get what you get.
We're going to make some changes at meeting.
No take backs, sir.
Too late.
All right.
You are getting this.
We are, we are moving along here. All right. Next on the agenda, we have Items K, L, Calistoga. We have a proposed concept plan for Calistoga. How are you? They were giving you grief. I watched the meeting. You came in from Cedar Lake, and they were giving you crap.
Yeah, yep.
So, all right.
Sorry I missed it.
No, they waited till you were here before they gave you crap, so they weren't doing it behind you.
Good evening, Jack Slager again with Schilling Development, representing the Calistoga Development. This is actually our fourth time at a study session, and we have attempted to tweak the plan a little bit each time after we listened to some feedback and comments. I want to talk generally at first about the, the next two projects because they're very similar, the Calistoga and the Stone Creek.
Sorry for interrupting you, Jack, but once we're done with the Calistoga, just to keep the record straight, then we'll jump.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Okay. I just don't want, I just don't want to be jumping back and forth.
Yeah, I will, I will do them separately. I just wanted to talk about a few, a few overlapping items, and, you know, both of these were requesting a PUD zoning, and they both require annexation into the town. So our research and experience has shown us that the development with a mix of housing products is more successful and more appealing to a larger demographic, and both of these developments offer a similar mix of products. Your comprehensive plan actually calls for it, and I wanted to read a little bit out of the, the comp plan. We, we reference these often. The towns have them, and you guys pay for them, and it's a guide for us as developers, but talks about a wider variety of housing types have been built in the town. However, the demand for a more diverse housing stock continues to grow in the region. Singles, young couples, empty nesters, and seniors are seeking more diverse housing choices and price points. Current trends in residential development include planned unit development, districts which offer a variety, variety of housing options. This would encourage a mix of housing types, including well-designed owner-occupied townhomes. This would encourage a mix of housing types, including well-designed owner-occupied townhomes. Senior housing and duplex homes. Require that all multifamily housing adhere to standards that ensure that new units adhere to good construction standards, high aesthetic quality, inclusion of owner-occupied units and are appropriately located. And so that's what we're trying to do based on what we're reading in the comprehensive plan. Another aspect of our developments is they have a strong HOA from the start. We set up a homeowners association for all of our developments. It's well-funded, and we have a good set of rules, good set of regulations. You'll see in a development, for example, the Preserve, we take care of maintaining all of the common areas. We mow along White Oak Avenue. We mow the detention ponds. We maintain the bike path. We even seal-coated the bike path this year just to make it last longer. So those are some things that we bring to the table that basically we're taking the maintenance of this development off of the town's plate, and we're taking care of all of the grounds, the entrances, the adjoining roadways, the open space, the detention ponds, the common areas and the paths. So in terms of Calistoga, it's a 173-acre development that sits on US 231 and wraps around to also front on Klein Avenue. We buffered the residential component from both main thoroughfares with extensive landscaping. We have some commercial parcels along 231. We will tie our access back to Park Place, which is the shared entrance of the gates and Mill Creek, and eventually have a new main entrance on Klein Avenue. The commercial lots will be fed off of a frontage road and shared right-in, right-out access on 231, which is based off of your corridor and your thoroughfare plan with no direct access to the commercial lots, other than right-in, right-out. We've provided 221 80-foot-wide traditional single-family lots, which is the south half of the development. The maintenance-free section previously started as 60-foot lots. We came back later, asked for a mix of 60s and 70s. We've come back now and changed them all to 70-foot wide. This allows for a variety of products and would also allow for three-car garages on some of those units. So again, that's a maintenance-free product. And then we have the 90-foot-wide lots with the paired villas. So we have three distinct products. We talked about previously the stub streets to the adjoining farms. We've got a park in the middle of the property. And we are now down to 363 units on 173 acres, which is a density of 2.1, 2.1 units per acre, which is comparable to many of our single-family developments. So again, the site requires a PUD zoning, and we would like to incorporate that into the annexation with this plan as our base. So I would welcome any questions, comments, feedback.
Questions, comments? So, Jack, when will we see the dimensions and the architectural standards for the actual houses?
That will be part of the PUD agreement, and we can put that together. We would have standards at least what the town's current standards are and probably higher. So we can start to flush that out.
I think it'd be beneficial as we're looking at reducing, potentially looking at reducing lot sizes to see how that is offset by the increase in our building architectural standards.
Yeah. Okay.
So I know we've looked at lots. You've been here, like you said, four times.
Yep.
I think now, I mean, I don't know how much more movement there's going to be on either side, but I think, you know, we've seen it. Let's start talking about the other amenities and how we're going to, you know...
Absolutely.
Look. The other question I have, you have the commercial on the north end. How did you determine... Because, you know, my... You have commercial, then you're going to... It's going to carry over to Klein Avenue. And from my perspective within the town of St. John is we could build homes all day at 1% tax revenue, 1% rate. We got to start changing the sort of the funding in the town, and we got to generate more commercial development, which is 3% to help offset increasing costs. So is that a... When you set that depth for the commercial, was there a logic behind it? Do you see that's the right size? Is it because there's no commercial to the west, there's no commercial to the east? So I'm trying to maximize the square footage of commercial zoning just for the benefits not only of the residents that are going to live here, but the residents of St. John throughout. So I just, I don't know what that is, but I don't know if you guys have looked at it.
Yeah, we did some research on what a viable commercial lot would be. You can see there's 12 acres there with five lots. So you're two acres plus on each of these lots. Now, that could be, those lots could be shifted depending on the users. We haven't really started marketing this site yet, but realistically, our next step would be to put a sign up there saying "commercial property available" and start to see what kind of calls we get and what kind of users would come there. And these lots could be, lot sizes could be manipulated based on the potential users that want to go there. But I think that's a viable area. I don't remember exactly how it lines up with the property of the west that's already zoned commercial. But it's... You guys, the town of St. John had already zoned, I think, the front 300 feet as commercial all along 231, and we went deeper than that. So I can get some more dimensions on this next time.
Yeah. Have you thought about the property to the east? Looks like the property line goes almost twice as far.
Yep.
And have you looked at maybe matching your commercial with that south property line?
That is actually pretty deep. I want to say that is...
Looks like it's almost twice.
Yeah. That's very deep.
And I'm not proposing a target here. I'm proposing more like a family... I like, I don't drink coffee, so Starbucks. But just something, I'm just trying to make sure as we approach this PUD, we're maximizing all the amenities that are available to this.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, we'll make sure that... I'll try to get you a bigger picture of how that fits in with what's out there, but these are good-sized sites. If we went much deeper, you're almost looking at too-deep or double buildings, one in the front, one in the back, which I don't think we want that much heavy commercial there.
And Jack, do you know, have you guys made a decision yet from what I listened to? Do you think, is this going to come before the plan commission? Or are you going to take this annexation, PUD directly to the... Or has that not been determined yet and finalized?
Well, that, yeah, I think I understand what you're asking. Our next step really is to pursue annexation, which goes directly to the town council at this stage. So that is our intention. We feel like this is the highest and best use for this property. You know, with all of our developments, we set the bar high, and we know that we will set the bar higher than anything around us here. So our next step would be to go to the town council, pursue annexation with the PUD zoning, using this plan as our base. Obviously, at some point, we'll be back here when we get into engineering, plating and all that sort of thing. So I would like to be able to say that we've met with the plan commission. We have their support. I don't know that that's necessary for annexation, but I would love to have your input and feedback before we go to that point.
In Klein Avenue, that's currently not in the town's jurisdiction, is it?
That's correct. This portion at least.
Right. And so when he annexes this part, it's still not in the town's jurisdiction.
Right. The roadway wouldn't be.
Because I know we had Altoff do a traffic study on, what street was that? No, God, what street was that?
Are you talking on...
Aren't I... Wait, what do we do?
Are you talking on Park and 231?
Yeah, Park and 231. I'm just, you know, there's always concern. There is 363 lots, but that's outside our jurisdiction. I don't know if a traffic study to see what KIPA improvements along Klein Avenue would be required. Because we had Altoff do it for Streamside, didn't we?
Yes.
And that was how many lots?
56.
54.
56, something like that.
So 54. I mean, we're at a point now where it's six times higher.
We'll do...
And we haven't talked... Jack, you've been here four times, and we haven't said anything about it. But I'm just, you know, I know it's outside, and I think Kevin said in his meeting, we're not, you know, it's outside the jurisdiction of the town, but...
Yeah, we'll do a full improvement on that intersection, that entrance. I don't think a traffic study would flush out what is needed at that point, but we will provide the usual Dcel, XL, turn lanes, double-wide entry, double-wide exit. So we'll do the full boat on the entrance.
That's on 231, but on Klein, I don't...
No, on Klein also. Yeah. I mean, it...
I didn't know if you owned that property. I'm sorry. Oh, I know it's a schematic.
Yeah. So our property line goes to the center of Klein right now. So we'd be dedicating the full 40, 45-foot right-of-way, whatever your requirement is for a major thoroughfare like that.
And will utilities be brought down along Klein, or how are you planning on that?
No, they actually come, the water and sewer is at Park Place right now, which is the entrance to Mill Creek. So they'll be brought through the development. You will, there is enough depth and size in both the sewer and the water lines to bring it all the way to the south boundary and the west boundary without a lift station.
I'm getting out of my lane. That's Bob's lane better, but we just want to make sure.
I think he asked me about a lift station last time. I said we can do it without a lift station. Yeah.
I just, I mean, like you said, you've been here four times. You've made some modification, but I think next steps for, is to see now what kind of standards you're going to come above. I'm hoping it's above what we currently have.
Absolutely.
Comments have been made. Our standards are pretty low, so, and I assume, Shaleen, I shouldn't assume anything, but hopefully Shaleen will raise the bar for this as well.
We will. We always do.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I have a question. I'm not opposed to your designs. I think they're wonderful. But, you know, all of this is what kind of a total number of population that you're going to get on 363 units that you're talking about? And I was just trying to figure out what kind of stress is that going to put on the water and the police and all the other little, including the school, which is out of our jurisdiction. But this is something that we have to fully think about because I know, again, it's not going to, your architectural designs or anything. I'm just trying to look at if this place was already designated. I just want to make sure that, I'm looking at 9,775 population potential. And that, what kind of stress is that going to put? That water, for instance, just... Those are the things that we have to think about.
Sure. No, I agree.
So I hope we could come up with something, creative ideas that you could bring up to the table.
And I can tell you, and we've talked a little bit about this in the past, but the maintenance-free units are typically both your singles and your empty nesters. So that is a little lower impact on your school system. And this, you're right, this does fall into Hanover because it's south of 231. But the empty nesters, the elderly population, singles, less impact on the schools, less traffic, less trips, less... The single-family homes are the families that have multiple cars. They're in and out quite a bit. So that's going to be your higher impact. But we can actually come up with those numbers. We can tell you what the projected population is.
I'm looking at probably 2.5, and that's including the, on the average.
Yeah, it's not that high anymore. It used to be, but it's not.
Two people, single family.
Not 2.5. It might be two.
So, single family, no kids?
Right.
Oh, that's a good one. I did the population projection figures, and it doesn't seem to give me that, but... All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So right now, it's outside of St. John. If it would come in, it would come in at R1 if it's unanimous. If it's not unanimous, it would come in at R1.
If the annexation agreement that they're proposing does not come in unanimously.
Not included in our comp plan, so it doesn't have any current zone, like, future projection of what that zoning would be in our comp plan?
So, since we're doing the corridor study, which I understand is not a comp plan, but there is a future land use map involved in that, we did send this and Stone Creek to TESCA as well to kind of review and fit in as to what is being proposed in those areas. So again, I know that's not a comp plan, and the last time the comp plan was updated was 2017, but it will at least be involved in the future land use map that will be released with that.
Yeah, I did not review the comp plan to verify what, if there was any, like, future projections on how this property laid out. Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? So, Jack, it sounds like next step, you'll start potentially providing us unit sizes, like some sort of the...
Absolutely.
What your amenities will be. All right.
We may be doing that concurrently as we go through the annexation process. That's a lengthy process. You know, there's waiting periods and whatnot. So we'll be coming back and keeping you in the loop as that progresses also.
Questions, comments, concerns? All right. The next item, which is Stone Creek.
So similarly, almost the same-sized site. Stone Creek is 173-acre site on the west side of Parish. Across from the gates, the property backs up to the railroad and runs up to the high-power lines. We show extensive buffering along Parish Avenue along with a paved path that would go all the way from the south border all the way to the north border. Also cuts across east to west under the power lines and wraps back around. And we've got some large green space at the north end. We will use the two existing entrances on Parish Avenue that were installed previously when the road was widened. We do provide a road stub to the north for the future three-springs addition. And we've also provided a road stub to the south, the undeveloped corner of Parish and 231. We have designated a section of this in the southwest, slightly lighter shade. I don't know how well your colorings are on your drawings, but the, just slightly lighter shade. We went with 100-foot-wide lots. We've got a nice section of trees in the center there that we kind of wrap those around. And then the balance of the middle of the property would be the traditional 80-foot-wide lots. And then at the north end, you have, again, the maintenance-free single-family at 70-foot wide and the paired villas at 90-foot wide. So this is a total now of 346 units on 173 acres for a density of 2.0, two units per acre. Again, the site, we want to come in with the PUD zoning, needs to be annexed. And both projects, one thing I failed to mention on the last one, but both projects would be phased with development over a six-to-10-year period. And you'd probably be looking at a build-out longer than that in the 12-to-15-year range for full build-out of either one of these sites. So that's, again, we've made a few modifications since last time. And I guess if there's any additional questions, I will refer back to the comments that you made on the last one. Some additional residential standards, architectural, and then kind of an estimate on the total population. I can get those for you also. So if there's any other questions or comments or feedback on this one. We also did look at the suggestion of potentially flipping the maintenance-free to the south end of the site and the, putting the single-family at the north end. So we kind of explored that a little bit, and we didn't like it as much. The south end had a little bit of character with some topography and trees. The north end basically is flat cornfield with the power lines. So we felt that this arrangement worked the best. And we would provide some buffering along that south side just in case that ever does develop as commercial on the very south corner. as commercial on this, on the very south corner.
It'd be a logical move for that property.
Yeah.
You know, for two thirty-one.
Jack?
Go ahead.
Do you still plan on proposing a residential TIF with these?
We are open on either of these. Obviously, that would be something that we would need the town's cooperation with, but we're very receptive to that if the town is. I know there's.
Two years to make it happen.
It involves some work, but we would, we'd be glad to do it. I think it would be fantastic for the town.
Two years before the law changes back.
Are you speculating, or are you?
No, no, the law, the law, so they changed the law this year that residential TIF was based on the fact that if a community couldn't generate residential units at a one percent increase, they would allow them residential TIF to use that, you know, help developers grow. They got rid of that one percent, they did some stuff with the school, notification of the schools. But it's only for two years. Now, that doesn't mean the legislation can increase it, but we got two years where we meet that one percent. We exceed that one percent, but, you know, we have, for St. John to grab seven hundred units of residential TIF district to improve infrastructure is, is logical. It is, it is logical decision.
And what's the one percent?
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, I think that deadline is actually more than two years. I think it actually is, the sunset is in twenty twenty-seven.
It was a total of four, four years, yeah.
Four years, I apologize.
Four years from this past July.
One percent was the limit. If you couldn't generate residential growth of more than one percent, of less than one percent, you were able to do residential TIF. They got rid of that one percent limit.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Because St. John could.
So it's open to everybody now?
So it's open to everybody?
Yep.
And I'm sorry, thank you, Adam, for the correction. So we have four years before they close it again, so, but the, the issue is you want to do it previous to homes being built, because you want to set the base at zero.
That's correct.
And generate all of the additional.
And what, how much?
It's twenty years, twenty?
It's twenty years.
Yeah, it's twenty years. They dropped it from twenty-five to twenty.
And how much money, did you say?
Uh, we believe, and, and I can run the spreadsheet on it, because I just did one in Cedar Lake, but these two sites would generate about forty million over two years, over the twenty years. About forty million to the town.
Forty million each?
Total.
Total.
Total, total.
So a couple of questions, commercial is, is my, but how far south does this go? Is, is Keenan Liquor, Keenan Liquor south of this site?
Uh, it is just off the southeast corner. Yeah, right in that southeast corner is probably like Sherry's Garden.
Okay.
And then just south of that would be the liquor store, so yeah, it's, it's almost getting down to the commercial across the street.
And then again, I'll just question the board, fifty-four lots, we made all tough to a traffic study. We have Parish Avenue that will be in our responsibility if a traffic analysis should be done just to see what type of improvements would be required. Just three hundred and forty-six lots, we made a previous developer do it for less than sixty.
Yep.
So if that's the direction, we just sort of need to give them, so, we could talk about that at our next meeting, we can make a decision, or. Sorry, Jack, I'm talking to the board.
No, that's fine.
I'm just saying, we, we previously made a developer do a traffic analysis for less than sixty lots. This is three hundred and forty-six, I understand you're gonna make improvements in the intersection, but Parish Avenue will then become under the jurisdiction of the town if it's not already.
Yep.
And we just want to make sure if we're putting, let's just say, two cars per lot, additional seven hundred cars, that we make sure that road meets the needs of that.
Yeah, they can calculate that out pretty easily, and we just did a traffic study on another development, and, and they look at the nearby intersections and the impact that it will have. So obviously, the, the most impacted from this development would be the north end of Parish at a hundred and first, which is a fairly new roundabout, and the south end of Parish at two thirty-one, which I believe is a roundabout coming someday, so that, those are your two impacted intersections, and the rest of them will not be. But if you want a traffic guy to flush that out, we can.
Have we been dealing with the indot engineer that is looking at the roundabouts? Do you know, John, have you been in discussion? Has Robinson been in discussion with any of indot, the engineer that's doing the roundabouts for indot on two thirty-one?
I'm not certain.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure they're aware of potentially seven hundred lots coming in and to make sure that the roundabout meets the capacity. So I don't know if an engineer has been talking to the town about.
Building and planning hasn't had any input to indot.
I believe Tom Nagel has been from Robinson.
John, can you ask Tom?
I can verify.
Can you verify that he's been in discussion with, and just advise him that there's a potential for seven hundred lots, and just make sure indot's aware, or the engineer representing that, to make sure of any modifications that need to be done now during engineering.
I know Tom's aware of these concept plans, but I'll, I'll have him check on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so, and, I mean, a roundabout capacity is, should be able to handle all this, but let me make sure. I work for an engineering firm, I'm not an engineer, so, yeah, I did say at a Holiday Inn last night, though.
What's that mean, I don't know.
You ever hear that commercial, I stayed at a Holiday Inn last night.
No, I miss that commercial.
No, that's a great commercial.
For safety reasons, and I know we probably watch a lot of the news on these railroad catastrophes. If you look at, just, what kind of buffer zone do we have that from the railroad tracks? It's in case of emergency, I mean, look how close they are to the railroad. And being a volunteer fireman, I know that there's a lot of hazmat material that goes through these railroads. And in case something like this happens, is there a buffer zone for these?
I have no idea. It might, I know we have one for gas line.
Yeah, we, we added in twenty twenty, I believe, the, the pipeline blast zone, but I do not know of any railroad setbacks that we have in our zoning codes presently.
Something to think about, because what's happening right now, it's a, you're having so many houses close together for safety reasons, but again, you know, this is nice architectural design here, but again, I'm looking at it for safety, what, what kind of safety mechanism do we have in case something like this happens? That, that would be my concern. I'm trying to, I know the fire department's not here, but I wish, they would probably say, whoa, we gotta.
I can tell you that track has a one-hundred-foot right-of-way with a single track centered in it, and there is a good vegetation line on both sides of it that we would keep. We don't want to open that up, so we're gonna have a nice buffer there. And then obviously, you see, we, we designed the detention at the north end to give additional buffer. But, yeah, I can, I can zero in a little bit more on those dimensions for you as we drill down into these plans.
Questions, comments, concerns? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the item, agenda, we have St. John Kennedy Business Park. This is gonna get approved, Jack. This is, I saw that street name, and I'm like, this doesn't have to go to the commission, we'll just approve it. Did you do that on purpose?
You know.
You did that, say yes.
That needs change.
That, I, what do you mean? I saw that, I thought they're naming a street after me.
I will tell you, our engineers came up with Kennedy Avenue, they asked us if we wanted to use Kennedy because it, it actually lines up with Kennedy Avenue further north.
You didn't say the president of the planning commission is John Kennedy, you didn't?
Coincidence, I, I don't know.
Well, now, it might not get approved, I'm sorry, I'm kidding, that's a joke. Jack, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I gotta find my notes here a minute, I'm, I got a pile of stuff going here.
You got thrown by the John Kennedy Business Park.
Joe wanted it to be his name on his street.
Well, we got two more streets to name, so I'm just saying.
Well, you could name one John and the next one Patrick, so it could be John, Patrick Kennedy.
So this is.
Unfortunately, they have to be numbers because they're east-west streets.
This is the St. John Business Park. This is a fifty-five acre site that is south of, south side of Joliet, just behind the Hack Cemetery, and it falls between the two sets of tracks. It's currently zoned I industrial, and per the St. John, per years of St. John zoning ordinance, the purpose of the industrial district is to provide for a wide variety of industrial, commercial, and office uses. We actually only have about thirty-five usable acres after we account for floodplain and water on the south end and detention. And we received a variance Monday night at the BZA to allow us to have one acre, minimum size of one acre lots. So this is the original concept plan, and we talked about the main road that bisects the site would be considered a collector, and we would have that as an eighty-foot wide right-of-way with a thirty-six-foot wide street, and we would have no on-street parking on that street. Ultimately, and this is part of your thoroughfare plan, but ultimately, our hope is one day this road goes all the way through out to two thirty-one and provides another north-south collector road that would allow traffic to essentially bypass forty-one.
I'm sorry, can someone put up an aerial? This would go all the way down to two thirty-one? I thought there was all wetlands just south of this.
There's, there's water in there, and that's why we show a, we show a large cul-de-sac and a little dash line where it could go. It's gonna take some engineering to get across that water, but we feel it's important for both developments. We do own all the land on the other side of the water, all the way out to two thirty-one. And so, rather than have two developments that are single-fed, one from the north and one from the south, we envision someday that this road will go through and go across that water.
Where does that come out?
Parish.
This is the lane now.
The viaduct is here. Going underneath the bridge, so it's east of the.
It would come out right across from the golf course, the, the little driving range there.
See, that's the, that's the underpass right here.
The property to the south, that's, that's not in St. John.
No, but it's ours.
So yeah, the little bit of pine trees.
So this is where Stone, that's where Stone is, right? That's where.
Yeah.
The Stone, okay.
Line up, and here's the, the golf course clubhouse and parking lot.
I'm just thinking Kennedy would be extended farther, be longer than the street.
Oh, good.
I have, I did include a couple of example site plans that we looked at on Monday night. I, I know you had those up a little bit ago, John. Yeah, so there's, there's just a couple samples of what these sites could look like. We did put some signage up a few months ago. We have been fielding quite a few calls off the signs. I can tell you that a, a good portion of the calls are current St. John businesses that either want to expand or are currently leasing and want to own their own buildings. So we definitely have interest. We feel that there's a need, and the industrial zoning is good. It, it falls in that same category that you were talking about earlier with the commercial zoning. It's a nice tax base. So with these lots, the plan commission, I believe, would still have the ability or, or would require each lot to come in for a development site plan similar to commercial. So as we sell these lots and individuals buy them, they would come back before you for individual approval of their site plans. Your industrial zoning does still have parking requirements, landscape requirements, signage requirements, lighting requirements. We're gonna add to those, we're gonna have architectural requirements and approvals on these buildings. And, yeah, that's it. I, I think we also had an example of one proposed building, maybe scroll up, John, if you had it there. Yeah, that one was one concept that was presented to us by a potential buyer and said, would you allow something like this in there? And we would absolutely look at some different architectural styles, rather than your straight pole barn industrial park. We'd require landscaping, street trees, all that stuff.
I thought that was a car condo. I thought those were three cars in there.
Well, it looks like a chandelier.
I believe it is.
Car condo? On Kennedy Ave.
Now, so since this, so Jack, a couple of things, the green space above lot twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, wetlands?
Uh, floodplain, actually.
Floodplain, okay.
Yep.
And then, I know you talked about higher standards for these, I guess my concern of an industrial area, truck traffic or any type of heavy load truck would have to come off forty-one. Well, they can come off multiple facilities, I guess.
Yep.
But Joliet Street, I don't know what the limit, do we have a limit on Joliet Street? A weight load, weight load limit on Joliet Street? I know they would have to come off, they would come off ninety-sixth.
Ninety-sixth, yeah. The nice part is you're, you're, the majority of your traffic will use ninety-sixth. You're not having to really go through any residential area. You're coming across the first set of tracks, past the current industrial park, and then you're turning in. I, I believe you're aware that the bridge is being expanded and improved in the next year, I believe. The county is doing that, you guys are paying to have that made bigger, which is great. We asked that they include enough width for a sidewalk. We would have sidewalk at least down one side of Kennedy Avenue, probably the east side. The west side falls off so steeply that the west side would be, you know, you'd basically have a drop-off off the edge of the road. So we would at least make sure we had sidewalk all the way along Kennedy from, from north to south. You know, I, you think about an industrial park of what we already have, there really isn't a lot of foot traffic there, but we actually envision that there may be some businesses here that would be professional office and/or could be some small retail, but slightly different than what you see in your current industrial park.
Does he need to get a waiver for this Kennedy Avenue being a cul-de-sac, being over six hundred feet? I thought we had.
That's something we could do here on the planning commission level.
Okay, just want to make sure of that.
We would.
I think the other two cul-de-sacs are small enough, I think it's six hundred feet.
I think it's five or six hundred feet.
Yep.
So just, I mean, I understand your, your long-term plan is to pull that through, I just want to make sure in the meantime.
And we would oversize these cul-de-sacs also to make sure they're decent for trucks.
So there's talk about improving the bridge, is there any talk about improving Joliet through this stretch? Because it's, to me, it seems like it's screaming for.
Yeah.
For help.
Yeah, for sure.
Sidewalks and widening and curb and gutter and lights and.
Unfortunately, as far as our frontage, we have like eighty feet of frontage. So we'll get our D, we'll get our D cell and our X cell lane in there, so we'll be able to widen enough to get at, at least a deceleration lane coming in here. This property falls in one of your TIFs already, in, in one of your current TIF districts. That would be ideal as a TIF project to really get this, get this property connected back to Shops ninety-six or what, the improvements that you just did, which is literally a thousand feet away. That would be a wonderful project to tie this all together with curbs and sidewalks and everything else, and.
But this is in the TIF district?
It is.
Okay.
So you could generate some nice dollars from this development.
Has Shilling been in contact with the cemetery? Is that the church property?
That is the Hack Cemetery, it's owned by the, the diocese, yeah.
Have you been in contact to maybe fill in some of that, so it's not such a drop-off?
I think we would, we'd be open to that. Obviously, the, the one or two cemetery plots that are out there sit up on the hill, that's fine.
It's just up.
It's low in the front.
Yeah, low in the front.
Yeah, and I think as we get into the engineering, so for us, the next step, now that we have the, the variance from the BZA, with your blessing tonight, our next step is to proceed with engineering, which is going to involve quite a bit, we've got extensive floodplain, quite a bit of grading to work out here. This is actually a very hilly site, which is not ideal for industrial development, but, so we'll be moving a lot of dirt on the site, and if drainage necessitates it, we would, we would be open to filling, bringing in some fill for that front portion of the Hack Cemetery and making it a little more usable site. I, I don't know, but I would assume it probably floods in the front there at times.
Holds water.
Yeah, yeah.
But are you proposing any waivers? I mean.
I don't think so.
I mean, besides the one lot that you needed through BZA?
I, I don't think there's any others that we. I, I don't think there's any others that we need that. Not that we've noticed yet. I, I mean, we're, we're at the, this is all we have so far as the concept plan, but we're about to dive into engineering. So we'll see if we need any more.
You know, just to clarify, the land to the south is under your, uh, Schilling ownership and it's outside of the town currently?
Some is, some is outside and some is in town.
And is it the, uh, south of the lake, is that industrial too? Or?
The lake, actually.
The south of the lake is out of town. That green line designates the town boundary, John.
Okay, so-
Yeah.
So this upside down chair with the two legs, if you will,
Yep.
is the out of town area, which includes Stone Creek and the bottom half below the industrial part. Stone Creek here.
Oh.
The industrial parks-
You said your butt there.
Southern part right there. If you zoom out, you could see a little better is-
So every, so the water is actually out of town, out of town, out of-
Uh, it splits down the middle. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
That looks like a chair. So it wouldn't make sense to push the road through now to, at least to the, across the pond or?
There's nowhere to go yet. I mean, it's a long way to get to the other end. I think what's going to happen is you'll see these two sites grow together towards the middle and eventually you'll want that connection.
Yeah.
But again, that, that would be a wonderful TIF project, future TIF project. Or if we get maybe the, the south half of this becomes a residential TIF, that would, those would be great projects.
I just, why I'm bringing it up now, I just, I'd hate to see, get the north, get the south developed. Nah, we can't do that. We can't cut through the pond and-
Well, there's a big DNR permit involved with the-
Yeah, yeah. It's quite a design and permitting, but as long as we allocate the right of way and it's there, someday it'll get done.
Yeah. Would you allocate the right of way now or?
Yeah, yeah. I'd, I'd go ahead and plant it all the way to our south property line. So it's there. So it's just set aside.
When you say south property line, 231?
Well, no, of this parcel, the, the south property line is actually out in the middle of the water. So, but if you look at the dash line, we're going to dedicate the right of way. So someday it can go across.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Next steps? What happens now? You know, this might be my first industrial park. Done working industrial zone, but I've never done a-
There's not very many industrial zone parcels in St. John. So it's one of the few.
I'm a little bit outside my comfort zone right now. So, all right.
It'll be, um, it'll be a little while before we're back with this one, but we'll, we'll start to, uh, plow through the engineering and, um, yeah, and, and the permitting and we'll work with you guys on that. So.
St. John Kennedy Business Park.
No, he's going to change that.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Slager?
He's going to have to change the name.
I might come for the public hearings. I might come to say, I used to like it when it was Kennedy Ave.
Rest of PC protest.
All right. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Slager? All right.